Let's go. Good morning. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for July 9th, 2019. And we will start with a salute to the flag. Mr. Sam Diney, would you lead us this morning, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hartung. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Certainly. Vaughn Hartung, Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair Bob Lucy.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler is absent. Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
I'm here.
Interim County Manager Dave Solero.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Leparelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you call, actually, Mr. Solero, public comment, item number three.
Good morning. Item number three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person that may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
First up is Mr. Sam Diney, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Sam Diney, Diney, the guard angel against, against the truthless and toothless Reno media, and also against the toothless Reno media. Did I say toothless or truthless? I meant both. The Reno media is a disgrace to our community. The Sams and the Sams and the Joes and the Angenets, and I don't want to waste my three minutes on all of those names. They're just truthless and toothless and cowardly. You know, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers, and the last 26 years I've spent defending the community against the toothless and truthless, wacko freak cowardly Reno media, scared to death of this 160-pound senior citizen. Their computers will not allow to write in DNA. It crashed when they tried to write it, and every reporter whoever starts to write something about, if they even think about writing something, the truth about Sam Diney, me, they get fired or sent off to Never Neverland or you never hear from again, or they change their names. The last three reporters who came in at the Reno Gazette, their names are Sam. What are their chances? Okay, Air Force Academy graduate, trying to be Mr. Nice Guy. Now that the media has deemed the Washoe County School Board operation wrong and dysfunctional, we either have a case of the board is wrong and dysfunctional, or that Tracy Davis is wrong and dysfunctional. Whichever the case is, we need to go back and wipe the slate clean from when those people started two years ago. Wipe out everything out. Everything they did is fruit from a poisonous tree. Everything. The most critical one, or one of the most critical ones, is this Wild Creek Golf Course scheme. It's time to cancel that. Take it off of the books. Nice smiling face. Cancel that. It's the dumbest, well, I've seen a lot of dumb things around here, ladies and gentlemen, but that is the dumbest. It's not dumb for the developers. They're going to make extra money. They're going to spend two, we, the taxpayer, are going to spend $200 million building a $50 million school. And, and we see that the school board who made this decision with a lot of button pushing by bureaucrats, the school board is dysfunctional. And everybody I talk to says they're dysfunctional. They are, they must stop that Wild Creek Golf Course scheme where they're destroying the lives of 500 senior citizen families. That is wrong. I'm not trying to be mean or harsh. I'm just telling the truth the way it is. Cancel that program. Start over again and do it right.
Thank you.
Thank you for thanking me.
You're welcome.
Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Ms. Sarah Cho.
Welcome, Ms. Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I just wanted to say that in listening to Mr. Diney, he kind of hits on the things that I was going to kind of try to come and talk about. The problem with telling people the truth is that unless you present it in a certain way, they might not listen to you. So, the truth of the matter is, is that we started out with a pledge of allegiance, right? And it says, "Under God," right? So, under which God? Under the God, the Jewish God of the Bible. So, I've realized after having a really good conversation with the man I trust yesterday that I could not become a politician because I can't compromise. I would not be able to build a mosque because it would not honor the God that we're saying the pledge of allegiance to. Does anybody believe that? Does it matter? Does it not matter? And as far as the school board goes, I was waiting for somebody to step in and step up and take care of a situation that happened with TMCC and Ace High School. Their criteria for acceptance at Trenton Methodist Community College High School is flawed. Well, guess what? I found out about it, and I had nobody stand up for me. So, I went through the legal process, the right process of filling out a form with a complaint that their process was flawed. I'm, I'm trying to be a nice guy, right? Well, guess what? The person that will be making the decision in the end is part of the flawed system. So, what are we going to do about that? I want to thank Ms. Jung for helping me work through the situation that I had with Summit Church. Basically, lying is really not illegal. It's not against the law. It's not against the moral constitution if you're a religion. If you're a religion, it's okay to lie. So, Summit Church is a religion. It's okay for them to lie. All right. I also, Mr. Diney, I bring around system crashes myself. Every time it seems I go, try to go in and tell people the truth about things, things crash. And, and the bottom line is that we, we all want to make things better in this world. We keep trying. We keep plugging away. We keep trying to address things, and it gets worse, and it gets worse, and it gets worse. Well, guess, guess which book is the only book that has that already documented? It's the Bible that this country was founded on. It's the book of God, the one and only God, that God does not like other gods. He says, "Don't do that." And our diversity nature says, "Well, we have to because we have to please everybody." So, how do I present the truth in a way that people will listen to me and not think that I'm not nice? Because if I tell somebody the truth, guess what? It's kind of a foundational point for the integrity that I hope you can see in everything that I do. All right? I don't make things up as I go along to try to get people to like me. I tell the truth as I go along to try to get people to believe me. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Cho, followed by Mr. Dwight Carlson.
Hello. Hi. I came here to meet, actually, all city council, especially Jeanne Herman. Thank you so much for caring and take care of the matters. And it's great pleasure, it's an honor for me to meet you in face to face. There was one, one purpose. Second reason I came here is you guys did a great job for improving Quartz Lane with the, the road beyond that paved road. And I was so pleased and, and very happy. But I went to last week, and it's just in front of our lot, our property. Someone, I don't know whether it can see the little dresser and this little project.
Can we have the overhead, please?
On the square to your right?
See on that little square on the, on the tabletop?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, other way. Right side up. There you go.
Those are dumping trash, start again. And I, I wasn't quite sure, and this car.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I realized exact same vehicle sitting out there, and mattress, and all the road start all over again. I'm not quite sure if it's retaliation or, so I just want to give you update on, I really appreciate what you done. And, but what are the plan? Are they going to pave the road? Or is the, what are, what's the next step? Are we going to do? Or what should I do as a resident? Or that's another reason I'm here to hear from you.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We can't, during public comment, we can't answer questions. It's not an agendized item. I'm so sorry.
Oh, is it? Okay. So, I guess then I'm done. I was going to just say, what is going on right now? Last week, still the same exact thing happening. And I wish she is some direction, but since you cannot really tell me, we'll just do whatever. We just clean up. We'll just keep cleaning up. And as we've been doing. Thank you so much for your civil service, and, and it's my pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Solero, will you have staff follow up with them, please?
Mr. Dwight Carlson, followed by Mr. Rex Flowers.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to see you all. I have concern about, excuse me, illegal dumping of boats, motorhomes, and vehicles on the dirt roads of Nevada, on the north and south end. This one happens to be on the North Virginia side of the dirt road out by the railroad tracks. There's a limousine dumped upside down there. Another shot of the limousine with the beautiful mountains in the background. This is Quartz Lane. There's, there's cleanup crew from the sheriff's department with the guys picking up stuff on the road because two vehicles could not pass each other. Municipalities use those roads, the waste management, ambulances, there's oxygen delivery. The road is about five miles an hour because of its, it's, the road's pretty washed out, roughed. So, we are up at Quartz Lane at 400, and even hired a private guy with a backhoe to kind of smooth some of that out. We're washing out. There's some more at the Quartz Lane. There's still some vehicles that are totally trashed up and down there, and some have been hauled out already. There's motorhome frames that are on the, abandoned on the road. It's basically a safety issue as, they can't get to everything. This is a picture of the sheriff's crew with, they had two 30-yard dumpsters down there and filled them both with help from inmates. And so, this is the view right from where we're at up at the top. So, I don't know if this can help or not, but there's power poles all the way down there. If somebody could talk to the power company, if we couldn't put cameras up there to help stop this illegal dumping on Nevada's dirt roads, we need help from everybody to get together so it's a safer place. Mineral Avenue has three or four cars there that are on blocks. The doors are ripped off. The sheriff's department has their hands full. They just don't have enough help from all of us. We need to get some cameras and help them help us. If we have to put a sign up that says cameras will film illegal activity, that's a good thing, too, because the bad guy can get away with it because he say I wasn't warned. And thank you very much for listening to me. Just a concerned citizen trying to help clean up our cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rex Flowers, followed by Mr. Charles Stockford.
Mr. Flowers, welcome.
Good morning. Rex Flowers, I'm the director with Coalition for Nevada's Wildlife, but I am speaking on behalf of myself today on the extension. I think it's 5. F. point four today on your agenda extensions for Robinson, Pitts, and Megan DeRoco on their service to the cab to manage wildlife. I would hope that you'll go ahead and just extend that. I really appreciate if you could just go ahead and reappoint them, but it doesn't say reappoint on there. And I know two of the three definitely want reappointment. We are making headway on the cab. We've got Department of Wildlife is going to get involved with us locally to take care of some issues on some big game in, in this county. And I would hope you'd just give them a thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Charles Stockford, followed by Mr. Vance Rushing.
Mr. Stockford, welcome.
Good morning. First off, I want to thank everybody for getting something done up there on Quartz Lane. They kind of stole my thunder with these pitches and things, but there's still a big problem up there that needs to be addressed. It's, they're using that site where those vehicles are at now for a dump. There's five mattresses that's been disposed of on that site in the last week. And they're coming out into the road when the wind blows, and nothing seems to, nobody seems to care and, or try to catch them doing these things. I guess they do them all at night. Going along the same lines, somebody came down Quartz Lane from the other end with a pickup truck, and every few feet, they were throwing stuff out of it. And for about a quarter of a mile, there's mattresses, there's TV boxes that they took their new TV out of, dressers and cabinets. And there was a top of a desk there that had a roll top. And I caught it the first morning that it happened, and I took those, rolled that desktop up and opened the drawers, and I found papers in there that gives the name, address, kids' names, and their ID card for their health care and everything. And I called dumping, and they said, "We'll be up to get the stuff." Well, that was two weeks ago. And I called them again Monday, and he said, "Well, we'll see if we can get out there this week." These people live in the valley. They live in a nice home in a, in an area that's controlled by the rules and regulations that they have to go by. And I went by their house, and they've got a new Cadillac truck sitting in their driveway with a camper shell on it. It's brand new. And here's a Chevy truck sitting there with brand-new wheels on it. And I'm pretty sure I haven't seen it yet, but there's this icon because they threw all the hubcaps out up there on Quartz Lane. And I'm waiting to see if dumping will come by and get this paperwork, or somebody, and go approach these people and get something done about it. So, the day that they took the last two cars off of Quartz Lane where they were working, they, the guy was loading them up, and a guy come by with a truck towing a car with three flat tires, and he towed it right past this driver, took it up on Quartz Lane and dumped it. It's up on a section of Quartz Lane. It's in the county. So, I just thought that this problem isn't ending because the problem is still there. Thanks again for, for what you've done so far.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Solero, would, would you make sure that we have Mr. Stockford's phone number and have the SO follow up with him with that evidence?
Mr. Vance Rushing, followed by Mr. Danny Kleos. And Mr. Rushing provided me with handouts, which I'll distribute to the board.
Welcome.
Good morning. Mass shootings, that's what that handout's about. And once again, I point out that every mass shooting after, and I didn't specifically mention this one, but after the University of Texas Tower shooting in 1966, the venues have been no guns allowed, no weapons allowed. You go over here to Meadowwood Mall, and what you got is a security monitor. You don't have any kind of security. He's running around on one of those segways. Anyways, on that handout, I've got the University of Texas Tower shooting boxed in for a reason. On that handout, you have a detailed explanation of what happened with that event. And what happened was you had armed civilians coming in to support whatever efforts were to take Mr. Whitman down. Armed civilians, people like you, people like, "Oh, we got back here," myself, come running with their weapons and provided support to keep Mr. Whitman pinned down so that the authorities could move in on him. That and a couple of those civilians. Okay? I went and tabulated the numbers, getting specifically to schools. I went and tabulated the numbers for school shootings. And between 1840, which was the first known incident, one, one incident, and 1960, there were 63 fatalities. From 1960 to the present, I counted up 505. An increase of 8.0158 and about a few more digits. Why? That's what we need to know. I know once, and one thing that happened was Earl Warren's Supreme Court saying that God is no longer allowed in our public schools in any way, shape, or form. So, what's happened to the students when they don't have at least six of those 10 commandments to go by, starting with number six and ending with number 10? Something to think about.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Danny Kleos, followed by Mr. Leo Horischny.
Danny Kleos, for the record. As y'all know, Lemon Valley residents won in a court against the City of Reno. Guess what? I guess we're not all stupid. Another thing, in that same courtroom, Mr. Solero perjured himself. Now, this stuff with your staff, it has to quit. They need to be fired. You got Dwayne Smith lying. You got Dave Solero lying. Two of your biggest guys lying. We bring in proof all the time, lying. On top of that, Mr. Lucy, he's on camera lying. We're not going to stop until all the residents are whole. Well, I guess it's been on hiatus for the last two years then, huh? Nothing's been done out there in the valley except, oh, HESCO barriers, pumps, pumps that don't work all the time that we pay for. When is there going to be a permanent fix? When are these people, your staff, quit their lying or get fired? I couldn't have a job where I lied and got away with it. For two years, over two years now, we have proven over and over what happens. Nothing. What about a moratorium? How many times has that been brought up? And just because I've been absent for the last two months because of medical reasons doesn't mean I don't watch your meetings. Where's the moratorium on the agenda this week? Hmm? Does it have to do with your staff again? Most likely because of who's sitting right there. This stuff has to quit in the county, guys. The people are getting fed up with it. Not only ex-employees of yours that doesn't, really hates both of those two, but residents that have to deal with them hate them both because they lie. Nothing happens. Residents are going to be coming together to get rid of everybody because we're tired of it. It's time that you guys do what the residents want instead of what you want. Because what you want has not been working. Lemon Valley is a perfect example of it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Leo Horischny, followed by Ms. Tammy Holtstill. And Mr. Horischny provided handouts, and I'll distribute them to the board.
Yes, my name's Leo Horischny. I live at 5216 Valley High Drive in Sun Valley. I have a couple of issues. I've spoken to the City of Sparks City Council yesterday about the fact that there is, on their, on their end, a discrepancy with what their mapping shows for their request for service page and jurisdictions. And in my, in my case, and at least two different locations, a difference between what the Washoe County map shows and what the City of Sparks's map, map shows for their citizen request forms. I asked for them to do something about that. I asked for them if they have some plan and the fact that, hey, here's, here's a problem. And if I only have two problems, Lord knows how many others between the four different jurisdictions. I ask the Washoe County, what I would ask of Washoe County is to assist them, if they do bother, to reach out to anyone else as far as updating and correcting their map, their jurisdictional map for service where it interfaces, at least with Washoe County. But the other issue, the big issue that I have is the stretch of El Rancho between Weetikend and McCarran is, is a redheaded stepchild between the three city of Reno's, Washoe County taking care of the median, which are the pictures that I have shown and shared with you all, that this, for the 10-plus years that I've been bicycling through that area, this is the general condition, and it really hasn't changed other than the fact that whenever somebody, somebody drunk goes through and takes out one of the trees, it isn't replaced. And as you can see in, in the handouts, it's being substituted with elms that are just wild growing there, which is sort of nice. But on the other hand, when they get big enough, this, the county is going to have to worry about those elms growing into people's backyards, in addition to, as you can see, the heavy, dry vegetation that every year grows up and is a potential fire hazard to anybody going by. And I have put in a request for service, and also, as you can see there, there are at least three piles of brush that I have cleaned from pruning that was interfering with the bike lane. And I did put in a request for service so long ago that they are dry and dead now, and they still haven't picked, picked up, in addition to the other branches and debris that is collected. And the thing is, is my understanding, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but my understanding is Washoe County is responsible for the road sides while the City of Reno is for the west side, and the City of Sparks is on the, right.
Thank you.
Ms. Tammy Holtstill, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. We need the overhead, please.
Welcome.
Morning. Tammy Holtstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. I'd like to start with, I spoke to a City of Reno representative regarding the ramps for the pump pipe, and I was, this is the exact wording. WC has had a new pipe crossing fabricated, and the work is scheduled for next week. That's this week. And the work will include ramps as well. Well, due to the fact that I've been around long enough to know that it's not going to be under $100,000, but yet I noticed that this whole thing has not come before you to vote on it. And staff in the past has done actions that cost money, that they wait until after they spent the money, they come back to you, and you have to approve it no matter what. Now, you guys chastised them the last time they did this. The residents, they want it fixed. They don't want more Band-Aids. If the water was gone, which... If the water was gone, which Mr. Water, sitting in front of me here, Tom was decided that they need to hold on to the water. Why do you need to hold on to the water? Get the water out of the lake and back to its natural rim. Then you don't need the HESCO barriers. You don't need to spend $70,000 a month on pumps. You don't need to worry about fabricating a crossing for the pumps. You don't need to worry about ramps. Emergency crews can get through to service the people that need to be serviced. Get the water off the lake. Period, end of story. This scheme, water scheme, that you think is gold is not gold. Also, the Vidler Pipeline. I have just been notified that the state of California has now put a law in place that states that if you are pulling water from an aquifer, that you need to replace that water back in the aquifer. So Fish Springs is a Nevada-California aquifer, which means that it's going to have to be recharged at some point. So what are you going to do about that? There are issues, people. You can't keep pumping water into a closed basin and expect it to stay there. American Flats is a good example that you can't recharge the aquifer in our valley. The red dye showed up in the lake, and there's proof of it.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst, followed by Ms. Denise Ross.
Welcome, Ms. Brandhorst.
Oh, thank you. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I'm still homeless. I'm still looking for a place to live. But I have moved into several houses. I have also moved into apartments, and it still doesn't work, does it? No, because you have to stand there with your machine gun and put the bullet holes in my body to make sure that those bullets are still launched inside me. Well, that's the reason, I guess, you have to have your home and your way to move in. Because you are evicted someplace else. You need a place to live again. Yes, you don't pay your rent. You don't even live there at all. You don't even pay your gas and electric. Put up the poles and wires. Now you can steal the electric. You can steal the water. You can also steal the gas from other neighbors, and then they can complain. We don't want the squatters here because they can't afford to be here. They don't live here, period. And that's the truth. You think that you can move in anytime you want to because the house is vacant. There's nobody living there at all. Oh, there's lots of vandalism too, because you have to break a window. You have to break down the door to get inside the house. And this is another crucial thing too. Because you don't have a way to get inside the house, but you will. Even if it's called vandalizing vandalism on this place. You know, it takes money to replace the doors. It takes money to replace the windows. Who's doing that for you? By the time the sheriff arrives or the police department arrives to the house, it looks like the windows are put back in. It looks like the doors are put back in. How did that happen? Well, I don't know who works for you people, but nothing's been paid. I've gotten a lot of complaints. Oh, the doors are not paid. I guess we'll just take down the doors. The windows have not been paid, so we better take the windows with us too while we're at it. That's the only way that they could get their payment for those pieces that they have to put in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Denise Ross, for the record, we won. Yay, us! But the most exciting thing, well, not even the most exciting thing about that, was the testimony that came out regarding Lemon Valley during the trial. And we understand that there were several opportunities and several things filed that had an opportunity to pump some of the water out of the lake. You guys chose not to do that. And I'm referring to Mr. DiMartini's acquisition of the water rights for Swan Lake. And y'all decided you wanted to keep the water. So you kept us flooded on purpose. But that's not over yet. We have some other issues with the lake. We keep coming before you and asking you, please do something with the water. It's not natural. Y'all know that. Y'all know what's caused it, and everybody's had a hand in that. There's a lot of illnesses that are starting to turn up in the Midwest. Legionnaires' bacteria, Pontiac disease. These are things that are starting to occur and grow in stagnant areas like our lake. Now, our lake has been stagnant for, what, two years now, two and a half years? And these illnesses occur when people inhale the mist or the vapor containing the bacteria. You guys are going to have some serious issues because you keep turning your back on emptying that lake, and it has to be done. You're going to have children that are getting sick. You're going to have neighborhoods that are getting sick. And just moving us out because it's convenient so that new developments can be placed in there? It's just the wrong thing to do. I don't know how it can continue. But the idea that you need to keep the water there is ridiculous. Now, we have emails that we've saved, and this is the ironic thing, about all of the help that we were trying to get over the past years, is we have all the emails and communications that we've done. So we've got records of things. So when testimony is given on the stand, we have emails to the contrary if it's not true. So things need to start being truthful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment. We have signed in, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I will close public comment. Mr. Manager, item number four.
Item number four, Commissioner's County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay, Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in first.
Thanks to the young man that came and unglued my speaker from the desk. On Friday, I spent some time in Coal Springs because I'd had a lot of calls from folks up there with ditches that were flooding onto their property. So I checked a lot of them out, walked down some. And what I found was, it's kind of a nightmare. It appears that a lot of the drainage ditches that are around Coal Springs there on the county side, specifically the streets that are close to Aspen, West and East Aspen. And there's water in many of the ditches for some unknown reason. Whenever it rains just a little bit, they get water all over their properties. Also, to kind of cinch it because there's white top that's like as high as the elephant's eye in some of those ditches, which means there's been water in them on a continual basis, probably. Just like along the river where it grows so profusely. And so I'm just wondering if that lake is also pretty high? And if that is causing these ditches not to have a place to drain the water off into... Incorrect English, I know, but... Just, it puzzles me that we're not paying attention to that. Because I sure would hate to see a repetition of what we've had to see a lawsuit come about on. Okay. I've had some people that are in the county, especially in my district, that are well over an hour away from here. And they would love to come and speak at different times on different subjects, but it's a long drive, and it's expensive to get in from Lake Gerlach or Faya or farther north than that. So I was just going to suggest that maybe we have, you look into. Since we have such a great video system and everything, is it possible that we could allow people that live more than an hour away to do public speaking on our screen? Can we get them on there? Seems like we've got quite a system, and it just seems like maybe we could accommodate these folks. They pay taxes, and they deserve to be able to speak without having to spend a lot of money driving in. Okay. I just wanted to make a mention of, I know it's been a couple of months, but there was a valedictorian in the North Valleys High School who wasn't allowed to give her speech, and I'd just like to find out why. And I did talk to our legal man here. And regarding the two issues that I'd kind of promised some people that would be on the agenda today, but they didn't appear. But I forgive them because of the holiday and all that, so we're going to have them soon. All right. I had requested that I get a schedule for some of the gravel roads in the northern part of the county. And I'd still like to have that, still get questions. All right. I think maybe, oh, one more thing. Regarding the county shooting range. I know taxpayers are paying for that. And it just seems that the citizens that are paying for it should have the right to use it. And it seems that most everybody I talked to that goes out to use the shooting range, it's at the wrong hour, or somebody else has the range, or they're not one of the friends of the people that are operating it. So I'd like to get that looked into because that's just not right. We expect people to use the range and not go out and shoot in the desert. And if they're not allowed to, it just kind of doesn't make a lot of sense. So I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? Commissioner Jung.
Thank you very much. I do have some requests from staff, and it's global as well as specific to Quartz Lane. As I think any of us could predicted, we spent the money to clean it up, and then the garbage comes back. It's still a free dumping zone for citizens. And we've done this for years as well in my district in Sun Valley with the cleanups and spent a lot of money without real permanent fixes to help people that are accessing this through this private road. So can staff come up with sooner rather than later what our next steps are specifically for Quartz Lane? What are the possible permanent solutions to that? Even if it means we're buying that or receiving that road from these heirs, fifth generation removed, it seems like, that live in California who aren't interested in that private road? And I think there was some good advice from the people that are actually out there. Let's get NV Energy involved. They use that easement for their power lines. Also, waste management, I believe, should be held on the hook for this as well. Because if Mr. Stockyard...
Stockford.
Stockford, thank you. As he said, he could trace exactly where these people were dumping because they don't want to pay the waste management fee. So I'd like them to be part of the solution as well. And then I think, most importantly, for Quartz Lane specifically, let's use the eyes and ears of the people and the advocates there that don't want that and tell them what are the proper steps for them to take to report. I'm sure the sheriff's office doesn't need a report every single time that it has happened. But when it is happening, how do they navigate this? How do we help them navigate it? Give them a decision tree of some sort? And that could be another way to address this issue, as well as Mineral Avenue, as was brought up in the public comment, period. Secondly, I would like to, as the regional provider of services, to get us to work with City of Sparks with their mapping that is... And I've reported this as well, that the mapping is wrong for who owns what part that Mr. Horishny was discussing and his bike lanes. And I think since we are the regional government, let's take lead on that and get that cleaned up. And clean up all of those areas that he has mentioned that are fire hazards as well as just visual hazards for people on bikes and obstructions. And perhaps partner with a bike advocacy group here in the Truckee Meadows. I'm not sure who it is. But I'm sure there is a bike advocacy group. For the 12 years that I've been in office, Mr. Horishny has single-handedly taken care of his own route. And I think that it's honorable, but I also think that's our job to do that and to respond quickly to people who are using alternate modes of transportation, who are finding these difficulties. And then I need an update from staff about my money that I spent a couple of years ago on Peavine Mountain, and I need this ASAP. What, where are my no-shooting signs? Not out there, and I know I paid for that. So I need an update on that. And then I did put in a request to 311 and to the management team a couple of weeks ago. Who has jurisdiction when we are in a red flag warning to declare that there can be no fire-causing activity, period, in Washoe County? As a county as a whole, not in the special pockets, again, as a regional government. Who has that authority, and how do we enforce that? Because the fire up by Somerset was caused by a work crew who, I would think, would have known it's a red flag warning day. We're told to not even have our little backyard fireplaces going during that. And here is a work crew, a contractor, or whomever they were, that are flouting that. I think we need to have a jurisdictional moratorium that coincides with red flag warning or whatever the science is that dictates this. So then we can hold those people accountable for all of our responses to these potentially very expensive and damaging fires. So that needs to happen sooner rather than later as well because the summer has yet to really begin here, in my opinion. So can that please get to me by the close of business today? All of those that I've asked for, because these are ongoing, and we need resolution. Thank you.
Okay. And I think we talked about red flag issues with our fire board. I think that's probably where that might come into play. So yeah, I think you're on, that you're spot on. There's no question of that. Along with some of the stuff that other commissioners asked for, Mr. Solero, there was a mention out off of North Virginia near the railroad tracks. It would be interesting to know, and I think we talked about this before, where that land was somewhat questionable, whether it belonged to the railroad or whether it belonged to Washoe County. So maybe you can just get back to me on that. And then that's all I have, other than looking for some dates still with staff to hold a community meeting on the requested charter school. Commissioners, anything else? Okay, all right. We will close. Item number four, Mr. Manager, item number five.
Item number five is your consent agenda. That's items 5A1 through 5H2.
Okay, Commissioners, anything that you would like to pull from consent or have any additional information on? Okay? I will entertain a motion. I will entertain a motion and then call public comment.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. First up is Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. Can we have the overhead, please?
Ms. Weatherly, which item would you like to speak on?
Oh, 5C, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. What I noticed today, I don't know if you can see that or not, basically the questions have come up as who is responsible for what, right? And I believe that we are in an absolute mess. So I used to take the dogs for walkout in the BLM land. Is EPA, are they responsible for things that seep into the ground? Are they responsible for the garbage on top of the ground? Can we get, take some of that money and clean up this garbage? I used to take the dogs out for the walk, the BLM land, I think it was BLM land where they had now built the school in the Highland Ranch area. And I took photos of all the garbage that was dumped in there. Never mind. Anyway, so I tried to make some contact as who was responsible for, who could catch these guys dumping their garbage that was really destroying our, you know, beautiful area there? Well, Washoe County, no. Highland Ranch, yes. If it's within a certain boundary, then we're responsible for it. So does that mean that we're responsible for making sure that we arrest the people that do that? I got a copy of the person that dumped the stuff, took it to the police and said, can we please find this person and find them? Nothing happened. So now this morning, I'm going along going, well, who's supposed to take care of all the weeds and the fox tails that are outside that school now? Because it's really hard for the dogs. You can't let them get into that thing. It's expensive. Nobody knows who really is responsible for cleaning that up. As I was on the walk, I thought, well, gosh, who are these people dumping in the BLM land? Where are they dumping now? And guess what? That was that picture. I went around the corner and there they are, the garbage tires stuck in the gully that's beside me. And all I'm saying is, I know you guys think that maybe I'm making things up, but what one of the gentlemen said is, we have excluded God from our schools. Guess what it's doing? We're excluding God from our government. Guess what it's doing? It's putting us into a deeper mess. I would say, let's go back to the foundations and say, who built this country, on what foundation, on what principles, on what structure? And let's go back to it. The other thing too is that it's pretty clear that there are two types of people, people that will clean up after themselves and people that won't. So the people that will clean up after themselves, let's not get punished so harshly for the ones that refuse to. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst?
Ms. Brandhorst, which item would you like to speak on?
It's 5B.
5D.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst and I am the United States President. The problem is the funding agreement between Washoe County, the State of Nevada, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and the City of Fernley. What is the problem? Truckee River Operating Agreement. We are stealing the water from the rivers. Why are, why is this going on? Well, I'll tell you why. Because the squatters in these places do not live there. They don't get running water at all. Because they can't afford it. They can't even afford their gas and electric. They can't afford their phone service. They can't afford the sewer lines. They can't afford to pay for the garbage. They can't afford to pay for the other things that we need to support ourselves on a property. So the joint funding agreement between the Washoe County, what are you doing? Nothing. The State of Nevada, seems like they have to step in and try to help all the cities that need help. Why do we need help? Because you people have to put up the poles and wires to steal the water. You have to steal somebody else's, what is it, garbage? Because the garbage cans especially. I was missing mine for a few days. Why? Because you don't have one. You have to steal mine in order to use the garbage can. That's, that's the big problem here. You have to go around and steal what you need for your purpose to stay here in our area. I was talking to the bus driver and he told me that he's still missing 12 from his bus, 19 from the other bus. And you know what? They still have not arrived yet. You cannot be in this area when you are brought in here by buses. They're called All West. And these buses told me that because you are not human, we have snakes slithering all over the city.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
That's all the public comment we had on consent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I will close public comment. We have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman. Is there any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager.
Chair, that takes us to item number six, which Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager, will present a recommendation to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Washoe County, Nevada general obligation.
Actually, we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and do this one quickly. And then I'd like to take a block vote.
Okay. Would you like me to do the reading or wait until after the presentation?
Why don't you give us a reading first, Madam Clerk?
Okay. This will be given Bill Number 1828. And if adopted, as suggested in the agenda item, it would be ordinance number 1641. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of Washoe County, Nevada general obligation limited tax refunding bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2019B, in the maximum principal amount of $11,650,000 for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds secured by consolidated tax pledged revenues, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and other details in connection therewith, and adopting this ordinance as if an emergency exists.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Valetich, tell us briefly what's going on here.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we have brought to you over the last several months, this is another refinancing of two existing bond issues here that we're combining into one. And it is the park bonds, Series 2006, that are outstanding, and then also the building refunding bonds, Series 2011B. Again, we have very low interest rates in this market right now, so these bond issues were a great candidate for refinancing. We'll be combining those two into one issue, so it would also be much more efficient for us to account for and to administer. Like the refunding that we brought to you back in May for the 2011A bonds, this is done as a private placement, so we solicited bids from banks to purchase this bond issue and we received eight bids. The winning bidder is a, is KeyBank. And I know in the staff report, at the time of writing this, we estimated an interest rate of 2.6% and savings of approximately $780,000. The interest rate came in a lot better than that. It's actually 2.3%. And the savings are $852,000. So we're very happy with that. I have John Peterson here from JNA Consulting, our financial advisor, and then also Ryan Henry from Sherman &amp; Howard, our bond counsel. And I think that's it.
So these are, so just for clarification, these are refunding of bonds? We're just refinancing them as someone would refinance their house? It's a very pedestrian sort of an activity? There is no tax increase, as has been suggested by some folks in the past?
Absolutely. No tax increase, no extension of the maturity date.
Right.
Or anything like that. It's just a straight refinancing and we'll be saving over $850,000, which is really good news. I also wanted to take this opportunity to let the board know that we were notified last week by Standard &amp; Poor's that we received a bond rating upgrade on our 2016A sales tax revenue refunding bonds. If you might recall, back in December, we worked with the RTC on a large refunding of their bonds and at that time made a joint presentation to Standard &amp; Poor's. They've come back and upgraded the county's bond rating from a AA to a AA+. AA+ is the second highest rating that you can get. A AAA is the best. And there's very few governments that carry that rating. So we're really excited about that because what that does is in the future, if we have to issue more debt and borrow money, we can do so at a lower interest rate. So it's very positive. And they also upgraded the RTC bonds from a AA- to a AA. So just wanted to take that opportunity. Do you have any more questions? We're here to answer.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay. No, that's fine. So let me go ahead and open public comment. I have one person wishing to speak and then we'll come back and finish our business. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Kathy Brandhorst?
Ms. Brandhorst, this is item number six. It's a refunding of bonds.
Kathy Brandhorst, I am the United States President. We are now talking about $11,650,000. What is that? Lawsuits. Yes, you brought these people in from California. I read the bus, the side of the bus, it said Sacramento, California. But who are they? They turn into snakes.
Ms. Brandhorst, this has to do with bond refundings.
Oh, yeah, these are lawsuits.
There are no lawsuits.
Oh, yes. They're lawsuits against everybody who brought these people here to our city, our state of Nevada. And that's what I am talking about. Bank robberies for the bonds because if you don't pay your lawsuits, you're going to have to go back to prison or get destroyed. Right? That's the truth. You're not going to be able to pay for your lawsuits unless you steal somebody's bank accounts from the banks. Bank robberies. The snakes, you people have to turn into snakes in order to devour people right on the streets.
Ms. Brandhorst, how does that have to do with bond refunding?
The bonds you steal, the bank robberies. To pay for your lawsuits in order for you to stay out of prison, for you to stay out of jail, for you to stay out of a destroyed, so you can stay alive, so you can devour by turning into a snake, you can devour people down the street. I felt the suction from those snakes while you're devouring people. You know what? This is not a city. I also watched it in another city, Fernley. Oh, my God. I also watched it in another city, West Windover, Nevada, where you people won't turn those people back to West.
Ms. Brandhorst, this is about bond refunding.
Yes.
It has nothing to do with anyone being.
Yes, it does. It has a lot to do with this. You're just trying to cover up your mistakes because if you're not alive, oh, it's going to be really a bad thing, isn't it? It'll be really good to save the United States.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
That's all the public comment we had.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I need, I need someone to move and introduce this bill and this ordinance.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I would make the motion to, sorry, let me take a stab at this. Yes. Move to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Washoe County, Nevada general obligation limited tax refunding bonds as prescribed in Bill Number 1828, which would be ordinance number 1641 for the, for Series 2019B and the maximum principal amount of $11,650,000 for the purpose of the refunding certain outstanding bonds secured by consolidated tax pledged revenues, providing the form and terms and conditions of the bonds, other than details in connection therewith, and adopting this ordinance as an emergency as it now exists.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy. Do I have a second? I will second it. Is there any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, please signify by saying aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much for your hard work. We appreciate it. Mr. Manager, we're going to entertain a block vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may at this time.
Commissioner Lucy.
I'd like to put in the form of a motion, a block vote this morning for the following items. I believe that we will put into a block vote a items seven, eight, 13, and 14 this morning.
Okay. Items seven, eight, 13, and 14. Mr. Manager, I have, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Jung. Will you read those items, Mr. Manager? And then Madam Clerk will call public comment.
Item number seven is a recommendation to acknowledge fiscal year 2019 year-end unbudgeted general fund transfers in the amount of $918,000. Net impact of the county is zero. Item number nine is a recommendation to accept a sub-grant award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public and Behavioral Health, in the amount of $165,650.24 with no county match, to support the position and activities of the Regional Behavioral Health Coordinator retroactively from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Authorize the Director of Human Services Agency to execute the sub-grant award documents and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item number 13 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and CM Works, Inc., in the amount of $359,246 for project and construction management services for the Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health System. That's the NAMs Homeless Housing Project, retroactive to July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. And item number 14 is a recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2019, 2020 payment of $266,669 paid in quarterly installments beginning July 1, 2019, as Washoe County share in the annual funding for the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency pursuant to NRS 278.0264, Paragraph 7, and an adopted interlocal agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, are there any questions on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call public comment?
We have one speaker on the block items, Chairman Hartung. It's on agenda item number 13, Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Ms. Brandhorst, you've elected to speak on item 13, which is an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and CM Works.
Yes. My name is Kathy Brandhorst and I am the United States President. Let's see. In the amount of $359,246 for the project and construction management services for the Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health System Homeless Housing Project. I just wanted to let you know, it's not enough money unless you're going to pay your own lawsuits again. It's not going to help us at all. We've been homeless for a long time now, since April. Who are we? We are the government. That's why you're putting us out on the streets.
Ms. Brandhorst, this has to do with construction management services?
Well, I'll tell you why. You're restructuring all the buildings that you had to tear down. Because you know, when the squatters move in to the motel, they, they take all the motel rooms on the top floor. They don't pay rent. They don't pay water. They don't pay sewer. They don't pay sewer. They don't pay nothing.
Ms. Brandhorst, this is not about squatters.
Oh, yes, it is. Now, we've got to rebuild this whole motel because you paid nothing. You know what that means? Nothing was paid because they can't afford it. They can't afford to pay nothing. So, why should she be in business? She's not collecting no rent for those rooms at the motel. No. Where's she going to get the money from? She, she still has nothing. So, why should the motel be in business when she can't collect a dollar? You know, they paid nothing on that motel. Why should it be in business?
Brandhorst, there is no hotel.
You know, you people say the project and construction management services, and then you also have the Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health System and homeless housing project. Where's that money coming from? You have to either bank robberies again from other people's bank accounts in order to build it, rebuild it? Are you still collecting property taxes? What's happening here? Are you pocketing all the money that you can't afford it?
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. We appreciate your comments. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second for items, let me get back to it here, seven, eight, 13, and 14. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Thank you. Mr. Manager, I believe that takes us now to item number 11.
Actually, I've got item number nine.
Nine? Oh, my bad. I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's a recommendation to approve collecting bargaining agreements with Washoe County Employees Association for the non-supervisor and supervisory bargaining units. And Patricia Hurley, our HR Director, is here to answer any questions that you may have on this item.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Okay. I will entertain a motion for item number nine.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
Let's see. No, sir.
Okay. I will close public comment. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, item number 10.
Item number 10 is a recommendation to approve the collecting bargaining agreement with the Washoe County Sheriff's Deputies Association Bargaining Unit for a three-year period beginning retroactively to July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
We have one person signed in on Agenda Item Number 10, Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Ms. Brandhorst, we are speaking on item number 10, which is a recommendation to approve collective bargaining agreement with Washoe County Sheriff's Deputies Association for a three-year time period.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I'm also an investigator too. Yes, not too, a police officer. Oh, my God. Well, I just wanted to, you know, update an agreement language regarding salaries, rights of association, holiday pay, medical plan, safety equipment, special pay differential. Well, I'll let you know how I feel on this. Where is our payroll checks? Where are our rights, you know, for the, to get our payroll checks? We work hard every day, and what do we receive? Disability checks. Oh, retirement checks. Oh, I'll tell you what. We don't even get holiday pay either. Somebody's pocketing that money. A medical plan. Do we really have a medical plan? No, we don't because we have to pay for our own insurance. We have to pay for that medical insurance ourselves, and it comes right out of our pocket from the disability check. Safety equipment. Oh, fire extinguisher? Is that what we're talking about? That's the only thing that we could afford, isn't it? Special day differential. What is that? We don't even have money to even purchase a Coca-Cola or even a sandwich. You put $10 on a sandwich and a Coca-Cola when you haven't, people, you know, come out to actually serve the city? What is it? Having fun, I guess, is the words. Sheriff's deputies, Washoe County, where are they? We have two police officers to patrol the whole area while we are having fun? Is that the word? Who pays the police officers? Are they really getting their payroll checks? Because they leave as soon as something goes wrong. There's a dead body in the park. It was set on fire. Where did the police go? They left the park.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
They left the body behind.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Is there any other discussion on item number 10? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager, item number 11.
Item number 11 is a recommendation to approve the collecting bargaining agreement with the Washoe County Sheriff's Supervisory Deputies Association Bargaining Unit for a three-year period beginning retroactive to July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Okay. Commissioners, do you? Okay. I was going to ask if you needed any questions answered by staff. I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Lucy. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there any discussion on item number 11? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager, item number 12.
Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve the cost of living adjustment in base wage of 2.5% effective retroactive to July 1, 2019. Fiscal year 1920 estimated fiscal impacts of $71,974. 2.5% beginning July 1, 2020, and 2.5% beginning July 1, 2021, with updated medical plan changes and add eligibility for new 5% of base paid crisis intervention training, education incentive for the confidential undersheriff and chief deputy sheriffs.
Okay. Commissioners, this is a call. Do we need, do we need any questions answered by staff?
No.
No, Commissioner Lucy?
No, sir. I was, we'd like to make a motion.
Please.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Lucy, second by Commissioner Jung. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none. Is there any discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Came off my screen.
We missed. I must have tallied the votes before.
I tried.
Yeah. But you're an aye, is that correct?
I am.
Thank you.
I'm reaching.
Yeah, you can't, I can't redo it.
You're quicker on the draw than I am. Will you please acknowledge me as an aye?
I will, thank you.
All right. Mr. Manager, I believe that takes us to item number 15, a public hearing. Okay. I will open the public hearing for item number 15. Proceed. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Would you like the second reading?
Would you give us a second reading on chap, for item 15, Chapter 110?
Certainly. This, if adopted, will bear Ordinance Number 1639, an ordinance admitting the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Development Code, within Article 406, Building Placement Standards, 110.406.05, general, to add to a, to add a requirement regulating setbacks on legal non-conforming lots when the lot size does not meet the minimum lot size for the actual regulatory zone applicable to the lot. The allowed setbacks, though, will be based on the regulatory zone thresholds for the next densest regulatory zone for which the actual lot size does meet the minimum lot size requirements. And to remove Section 110.406.35E, side yards prior zoning regarding the option to use the side yard setback requirements of the land use category comparable to the parcel size for lots creating prior to, created prior to May 26, 1993, and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. This was previously issued Bill Number 1826.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 1639. And, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Lucy.
I move that we adopt the Ordinance Number 1639, affirm the forefondings of fact the Washoe County Planning Commission made on May 7, 2019, recorded as Resolution Number 1912, and attach the staff report to this item.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Jung. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. I will close public comment. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, item number 16.
Item number 16 is also a public hearing, second reading, and adoption of an ordinance.
Madam Clerk, would you give us an ordinance?
If adopted, Mr. Chair, this will bear Ordinance Number 1640, an ordinance admitting the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110, Development Code, within Article 306, accessory uses and structures, at Section 110.306.10, detached accessory structures to revise the allowable quantity, location, size, aesthetics, permitting, and other standards associated with the placement of cargo containers as detached accessory structures used for storage within Article 310. Temporary uses in structures at Section 110.310.35H, temporary contractor or owner builder materials or equipment cargo containers, to update the point in the permitting process at which a cargo container may be placed upon a vacant piece of property to support construction and to establish additional timeframes regarding when such a cargo container must be removed within Article 902, definitions, at Section 110.902.15, general definitions to establish a definition for cargo container, and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. And this was previously issued Bill Number 1827.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, staff is available. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to ask a question. When do you think that we will have that addendum or whatever happens regarding the semi-trailers being added to this?
Mr. Manager, I think you can probably answer that best. That comes under commercial vehicles?
Yeah. So, that's the commercial vehicles portion of the, of the code that we've talked about. And so, we currently have short-term rentals that is in the queue right now that we're working through, and then the commercial vehicle portion will be following shortly thereafter as soon as we can get that done. As you can imagine with staff, you know, we're trying to stack these up as quick as we can with all the, you know, development approvals and everything else coming in. We're trying to, trying to hit these one at a time. So, shortly after we get our short-term rentals, which is in full swing right now, I expect, you know, probably the February timeframe for that item to be worked on.
So, Mr. Manager, let me ask you a question, and I don't mean to interrupt, Commissioner Herman, but let me ask you a question. On that, can we, can we put a short-term stay on those kinds of complaints until staff can get back to us? Because, I mean, this is, this is really, I mean, it, it really does fall under the same category.
Yeah. Let me, let me go back and research exactly what can be done associated with, you know, what authorities we currently have within the code related to that.
And then bring that back to us as quick as we can. Hopefully, at the next meeting.
I will, I will bring some update up to you on that.
And, and please style it as an action item. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call public comment before I ask for a motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Amanda Hilbert, followed by Mr. Kelly Hilbert.
Ms. Hilbert, thank you for waiting.
Yes. I don't have a whole lot to say now that I know everything's getting pushed off.
Would you, would you identify yourself?
I am Amanda Hilbert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Like I said, I don't have much to say now. I was really hoping that this would kind of be put in for today's stuff, like was kind of spoke about last time. Again, I don't see where there's a difference. I don't see where there's a big thing that we have to stretch this out until February. There's, we're not stacking anything. Once again, I've said that before. It's not, but being put on roadways, it's, it's, it's a storage container. It's just like any shed you're going to put on your property. So, really, to stretch it out to February just seems highly ridiculous to me, but that's, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly Hilbert, followed by Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Mr. Hilbert, welcome.
Hi, my name's Kelly Hilbert. Yeah, I agree. I don't understand why this is getting pushed off so much. I live at 17690 Roper Court. We had a complaint, or supposed complaint, about a, a commercial vehicle on our property. We're using it for storage. I got to watch the last meeting that my wife was at, and I do appreciate everybody's comment that you guys had on it. Being stacked was brought up, you know, and we're not asking to, to stack them. The structural soundness has been brought up. I honestly believe it's more structurally sound than the single wide trailer I grew up in Sun Valley in, you know, to tell you the truth. Mr. Lucy, you brought up the side of 395. If you go up on a windy day, you know, and you'll see a semi-truck trailer, you know, very often sometimes, but you also see a whole bunch of semi-truck trailers parked on the side of the road because they stop them, and that has everything to do with cargo containers on them, semis with cars on them. You know, it's, that's more of a wind issue on the highway, not a wind issue in, in my backyard. I do have a semi-truck trailer back there. I didn't buy it to go against code. I bought it because it was cheaper than a cargo container. It was more accessible. It was actually half the price, you know, and I work construction. I'm not, I'm not like a real wealthy person or nothing like that, you know. And we got it just to, I mean, we've got Christmas stuff in there. We got an old, you know, old bunk beds and stuff like that, just stuff so that we're not cluttering up our yards and stuff like that. We try to keep a reasonably decent yard, you know, and like I said, I mean, I don't, I understand there is a structural difference between a cargo container and a semi-trailer. I, I will never argue that, but I don't see where a semi-truck trailer isn't structurally sound enough to be a cargo container on a piece of property. It's sat on my yard for two years now, and it's, it's held up just fine, you know, through the wind, through the rain, through all that stuff. I don't, I do not like the fact that in that meeting, we were supposed to come back here today. I'm taking two hours off of work today to come, and this was supposed to be reworded today and, and hopefully get something taken care of. So, we have $150, $50 fine, and you brought that up about things getting pushed off, and I, and I hope that our stuff can get pushed off because we're supposed to have it off our property by August 20th, you know, and if, if this thing goes right for us or in our favor or in everybody's favor that has a semi-truck trailer, you know, I don't want to have to get rid of this to have to go spend more money to get one, you know. And the other thing I'd like to say real quick is if you sit on my front porch and you look through the valley, and I'm not making a complaint about anybody, but you can see at least six or seven of them, you know, through different properties, you know, and so, it, it's not, it's not a bad thing to have out there. It's not an eyesore. If it is, we'll paint it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Ms. Brandhorst, we're speaking on item number 16, which is the use of cargo containers for storage.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Cargo containers, the train cars are all. Cargo containers, the train cars are always sitting out there in Sparks right across the street from the Nugget. Oh my God. And I just wanted to tell you those train cars are still being stolen off the property. You don't own the cargo containers. You don't have no right to steal the train cars off of that property because the stuff inside is not yours. You must return everything that you have stolen out of those train cars. But you still refuse to do that because I guess you need to have your own department stores, but you really don't know that you are selling merchandise that has been stolen. Oh my God. You could be charged, but maybe you won't be charged because maybe you're different from the rest of us. Maybe that's the reason why you're not arrested, you're not in jail, you're not in prison. Is that the real, real reason why?
This has to do with storage cargo containers on parcels.
Yes, and I'm talking about the ones in Sparks, you know, the train cars that they have to park there.
Those would not be under our purview.
Oh, yes, it would be. They're the train cargoes, and they are the ones that are being stolen right off the property, even in the middle of the night. Somebody has the key to the gate where they can just walk in and steal the train car. You know, I don't know how they're doing it, but I guess they have some type of a way to tow it off, just like they do cars, just like they do trucks. They are towing them away. And what, what happens to that stuff? I find it in a mall, and you're selling all the stuff that people own. It's not yours to steal. You have to return it.
Ms. Brandhorst, this doesn't have anything to do with items that are being stored inside the cargo containers. This is only the cargo container itself, ma'am.
Well, if you're going to put it, you know, mildly, the cargo container must be removed, but not by you, not by anybody else except for the person who owns that cargo.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. Okay, commissioners, I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1640, and then we'll have a small amount of discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lucy.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1640 as provided, I mean, setting the effective date established by the Nevada, Nevada revised statutes and affirming the forefondings of fact Washoe County Planning Commission made on May 7, 2019 as recorded within Resolution Number 19-11.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman, under discussion. So, Mr. Manager, bring back, please consult with legal, bring back some options for us as soon as possible because I, I, again, I, I fail to see the distinction in these items. And, and it, it's, I, I think, I think, you know, basically, they're essentially the same thing. You know, one is a, one is a, a home-built shed, so to speak, and another is a shed that's, that's being purchased, and, and they're, I mean, you know, they're essentially the same type of an item. So I'd like to know what we can do to, and I, I recognize staff's issues in terms of timing for the, the new ordinance on commercial vehicles, and we've had lots of discussions, and I'm, I'm very concerned because there are a lot of people who run home businesses on large parcels and, and store their commercial vehicles, and, and the assertion has been that those commercial vehicles tear up roads more than, you know, a, a standard type of a vehicle for non-commercial use. And I would submit to you that, you know, that they're actually applying less weight to the pavement, and so that we, we really do need to just bring a, bring a stay back in the interim until staff can get that back to us. Okay? Commissioners, any other comments? Okay, all right. I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, second by Commissioner Herman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Takes us to item number 17. However, we do not need a possible closed session today, so we can move.
We don't. I, I thought.
We do not, not for, we need attorney-client.
Attorney-client, okay, I'm sorry. My bad.
Yep. Item number 18 is our final public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to items both on and off the commission agenda. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call our final public comment, please?
We have one person sign in, Mr. Chair, Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. And while she's making her way to the podium, I have received some correspondence from Anne-Marie Grant, which I will place on the record of today's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Brandhorst, welcome back.
Yes. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I'm also president around the world. I just wanted to let you know that the existing problems that are brought up by the county, they're not going to be removed at all because there's cities all over the state of Nevada that are complaining it's coming from the Washoe County. Never hired. And why is that happening? Well, I'll let you know that, you know, you come into our territory from a different of, um, city, different state. Like I was complaining about the buses that were, that came into our territory, and then they all complained that they did not have a full bus when, when leaving. They had a full bus coming in, but what happened to over 100 of them? They landed right here in our territory, didn't they? Because there's nobody there to stop them from coming and staying in our area, is there? No. I'll answer that for myself. But, you know, I was sitting there all west. The buses were loading everybody out of our area because they are murderers, bank robbers. They are the squatters. They steal. They murder. They rob grocery stores. They rob the parking lots where they're selling cars, selling brand-new cars, and you allow them to take it all out of our area. And those people are now closing down their businesses because they cannot afford to pay nothing, just like they didn't pay nothing to steal it. So we're going to be closing down a lot of businesses because of that reason. If they don't pay nothing, we cannot afford to purchase nothing in order to resell it to the public. So like I was saying about the motels, they're all closed, but you had to knock them all down to nothing because they got nothing. They cannot afford to pay nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst.
And we had one more person sign in, Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly, welcome back.
Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. Things have been so tense lately, and I thought, wouldn't it be kind of fun if we addressed some of the minor issues and traded off with the bigger ones? I agree with you about the water bottles that I waste. I think that it's probably very wasteful, not a smart thing to do. So I was thinking, well, we should negotiate. I think that we should all go take a Tesla drive, a Tesla test drive, and then if we did that, I would stop using my plastic bottles. Would that just be the funnest thing ever? So I had written a YouTube yesterday about a comparison between Bernie Sanders and Elon Musk because there's this social socialism, democratic socialism, that says universal health care, right? Exoneration for immigrants. We pay for everything. And I thought, well, that's not fair because my responsibilities are high enough as they are. If that takes place, guess what? My responsibilities will increase and my daughters will decrease because the government will take care of everything for her. So I was so afraid that this young man was going to slip into social democratism. So I created the YouTube, and I says, well, here we have Bernie, here we have Elon. Elon does things that work. Oh, we have a Gigafactory down the street. Oh, we have jobs. We have people that are employed. We have people that he respects and that respect him. So, and he's a billionaire, so gosh darn it, according to Bernie Sanders, he's just a rotten human being. He cares about his work, cares about his employees. He offers things. He's trying to make an environmental difference, and we rip him to pieces. So what about Bernie Sanders that wants to have everybody taken care of whether they work or not? So I insisted that this young man watch this YouTube video, right? Because I was afraid of the decisions that he might make. He refused. Instead, he came out and found me and said, I want chocolate chip cookies. And I went, okay, let's do a trade. Let's do a fair trade deal. I'll make you chocolate chip cookies if you promise that you will not be a socialistic Democrat in the future and make everybody pay for people that don't want to work. So he said, okay. We had cookies, and I don't have to worry about it. So if you guys are ready to go for a Tesla test drive, I swear, I promise you, I will stop using bottled water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, Madam Clerk? Okay, we will close public comment. Mr. Manager, that leads us to item number 19.
Yes, item number 19 is Commissioner's County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics on future agendas.
Okay. Commissioner Lucy, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I was, after we had the discussion briefly this morning in regards to Quartz Lane and Mineral Lane, is it possible, obviously, as repeat offenders and we keep, as Commissioner Jung pointed out, you know, we put it out there, we clean it up, and they keep, and we continue to litter, is it through VIN numbers and possible some kind of vehicle IDs on the, on the cars and that, that we can go back and enforce some kind of penalty on the previous owners through the DMV? Is there something we can do? I'd like to, if staff can bring something like that back, somehow we can enforce that because there was a suggestion of cameras, but I don't know if cameras is exactly the way we can do it, but if we can go back and through cleanup processes, identify who the owners were through the VIN numbers, that might be something of benefit. That was just one idea I had. Thank you.
Okay. And, and on that same, on that same note, Mr. Solero, would you, would you work backwards with legal and find out what type of penalties we might be able to impose, especially if, if we find that there is personal information, you know, in a, in a pile of trash and, and we find that it is actually them, so that we can, we can potentially impose some fairly harsh fines? Anything else, commissioners? So, Mr. Solero, the last thing that I have a question on is on, on the commercial ordinance, would you also let us know there was apparently a statement made by an officer during a hearing, a hearing officer, that if, if we were to bring an item back to the agenda that we could overturn a hearing? So, and it's, and it goes specifically to the, the commercial vehicle that was parked on the property?
I'll have to double-check what our, you know, what the process is, who's, who's got the say over the top of the hearing officers as we go through that, that code enforcement.
And once, once the hearing officer has made a decision, you know, get, get back to us and, and let me know what either the appeal process is or, and maybe, Mr. Lepreli, maybe you have some, some thoughts on this at some point. Okay, commissioners, anything else? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.